And I'm gonna leave the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the state that symbolizes the virtue of friendship among the American citizens. So glad you guys didn't follow that part. Want to welcome guests? The reminder is the Board of Education, Department of Municipal Schools, all powers of the board lie in its action. As a public body and as an individual, a member of the board has no authority or power, did you know that? Okay, as the body of the board, I'm just calling you. As a body of the board, the board collectively holds powers and responsibilities. These powers are exercised transparently during public meetings such as this. Administrative and operational functions of the school districts such as day-to-day operations are handled by or under the superintendent and district staff. All board members are in attendance today. Each board member will identify themselves when speaking, all votes will be by a roll call vote. Guests wishing to provide public comment are asked to complete a public comment request form located on the table at the entrance card should be placed in the basket at the sign-in table. As a reminder, comments related to board responsibilities may be passed on to the board for consideration. Comments related to administrative responsibilities or requiring further investigation may be passed on to administrative personnel for consideration. Personal attacks upon board members, staff, personnel, or other persons in attendance or absent by individuals who wish to provide public comment are discouraged. Guests will be called upon under the limited public forum section of the meeting. Guests submitting a form will be acknowledged and will have three minutes to state their comments or questions. Guests are not allowed to share their time with other guests, a total of not more than thirty minutes will be allowed for all public comments. Item number four, consideration to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I recommend the board approve the agenda as written.
Can I get a motion?
Second, Maxwell.
Thank you, can I get a second? Rock, Roll, Miss McWilliams, Miss Maxwell, Mr. Corley, I, Miss Stradlin, Miss Mays, aye. Item number four or five, opportunity for guests, and we have none. Item number six, reports from the superintendent's staff and board, written reports provided to the board members and are linked to this meeting's agenda. Item number seven, the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I recommend the board approve item seven, date the seventh P on the consent agenda presented.
Can I get a motion?
So moved, I'm just rattling.
Can I get a second? Rock, Roll, Miss McWilliams, Miss Maxwell, Mr. Corley, aye, Miss Stradlin, Mr. Mays, aye. Item number eight, finance and facilities. A consideration to approve the purchasing procedures presented by Bobby Newman.
Board President Corley and members of the board, um, the purchasing procedures have not changed since you looked at them last year. Um, we follow the state procurement rules. Um, any purchase over twenty thousand dollars and under sixty thousand dollars needs three quotes. And any purchase over sixty thousand dollars requires a bid process for a request for proposal. This um document really is procedures for the secretaries at the site to make purchases to follow if they have any questions, they can refer to this. Does anyone have any questions? I'm not gonna go through.
Oh, looks pretty good.
There's been no changes due to audits or anything, same as last year?
Same as last year, except they changed the date at the very bottom that I reviewed it.
And how much does it have to be to have to have a R and P?
Over sixty thousand dollars.
But at the individuals, it's twenty thousand.
Um, no, if a purchase is between twenty thousand and sixty thousand, then we need to have three quotes.
Any other questions? Mr. President, I recommend the board approve the purchasing procedures as presented.
Can I get a motion? Can I get a second?
Second, Maxwell.
Rock, Roll, Miss McWilliams, Miss Maxwell, Mr. Corley, aye, Miss Stradlin, Mr. Mays, aye. Alright, another B, consideration to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six district operational budget presented by Bobby Newman.
So this is a, just a quick look at the budget that was presented at the last meeting. Um, the first slide.
It was, it was presented the last meeting and preliminarily approved, but there's no change.
So our S E G are for this current year, our S E G is one hundred thirty-one point seven million dollars. Next year, our initial S E G is one hundred and thirty-seven point one million dollars. That's an increase of five point three million dollars or four percent. Our program unit. Our program units, our membership, we saw a decrease of three hundred and sixty-six students this year compared to last year. Our unit value was set at six thousand eight hundred and one dollars and thirty-five cents, and that's an increase of three point six percent. The at-risk index changed to the family income index and English learner multiplier. And that's an increase to the S E G of five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. And that is part of the H B sixty-three bill that passed this year. Um, an increase of membership factor for sixteen plus grades to one point three. Is it brought in an increase of one hundred and three thousand dollars? And that helped to to offset the decrease of those three hundred and sixty-six. And that's also H B sixty-three. K twelve plus added six hundred and twenty-one point two hundred and sixty-nine program units to the S E G. And that brought in an increase of four point two million dollars. Um, funded membership, our current year's sixty, or excuse me, eighty and one-twenty day student count was three hundred and sixty-six students under last year's average. Um, a hundred and four point five of those students were from the elementary schools, eight from the middle schools. And the high schools lost one hundred and eighty-one point five students, so it's pretty pretty broad range of. Our mandated expenses for next year, we have the four percent pay increase for all school personnel, we had insurance increases. Uh, medical was nine point nine five percent and dental was four percent. The nurses have a minimum salary of fifty-five, sixty-five, and seventy-five for the three tiers. Um, there was a sixteen percent average increase statewide through the risk insurance. Um, seventeen thousand dollar award increase for instructional materials. We budget two hundred thousand dollars each year for tier movement. And the vacant F T Es were budgeted at three point three million dollars for next year. So this is a look at the operational budget that was presented at the last meeting, this is just the the listing of the object categories. Um, I do want to point out that the employee compensation and the benefits, those are the biggest chunks of money. Our personnel expenses are over eighty percent of our budget, so we that's where our money goes. Nine million dollars of our carryover was added to the budget this year. Um, seven million dollars is added to purchase services, six million of that is for security. And one million dollars for maintenance and repair building. And two million dollars is added to supplies for the math and literacy programs. These were budgeted based on the district needs assessment and decided on by the budget and financing committee. Our cash balance at the end of this year, our estimated expenses for this current year are is one hundred and twenty-three point nine million dollars. It's made up of ninety million dollars in your business life. Of ninety million dollars a year, your state expenses and thirty-three point eight million dollars in your today income since end of year. Um, our final S E G for this year was a hundred and thirty-one point seven million dollars. We have um seven point eight million dollars estimated S E G that will be left over at the end of this year. Um, we have the added revenue for indirect costs and um facility rentals. We add that to our actual cash from last year, which is sixteen million dollars. And we have twenty-four point one million dollars estimated cash carryover to be budgeted for next year. And this is just another look at the cash balance. Um, with our cash balance from last year carrying over. The uh total cash available is a hundred and forty-eight million. Our expenses are estimated at one hundred and twenty-three point nine million dollars, and that leaves the twenty-four point one trillion dollars, that's the budget. Then our next steps. Um, I'd be asking the the board to formally adopt the budget during this meeting and then tomorrow any um any budget items that P D requests will be sent in. And then the last day for P E D to approve the final budget for next year is June three. And then, are there any questions?
Mr. President, I recommend the board approve the twenty-five, twenty-six district district operational budget as presented.
Can I get a motion?
So moved, Maxwell.
Second? Rock, Roll, Miss McWilliams, Miss Maxwell, Mr. Corley, aye, Miss Stradlin, Mr. Mays, aye. Item number nine, Board of Education, go on presentation presented by R B C.
Yeah, Mr. Eric Harrigan from R B C is here with us today, you have his. Yes. Uh, just so the board knows, Mr. Harrigan presented to the finance committee prior to the work session.
Uh, good evening, uh, President, I'm the board superintendent, Eric Harrigan of R B C Capital Markets. Um, so today I'm giving a presentation because at your next month's meeting, uh, the board will need to decide on whether or not to send a question to voters for this November um for issuing uh general obligation bonds, as you may recall, uh, the board issued this last series of bonds that were authorized by voters back in twenty uh twenty-three. So on the first page of the presentation, we have a history of your assessed value. Uh, wanted to go over this partially because it does, uh, you know, impact the uh growth assumptions in your tax base. Do impact the amount of bonds that uh the board could go to voters without uh increase in your existing tax rate. Um, this past year, you had a little over three percent growth in your assessed value last year. Um, you saw over ten percent growth in your tax base. Um, by far, the two largest components of your tax base are your residential values and your non-residential values. Um, if we look over the last five years, you grew on average by about three and a half percent per year. We look over the last ten years, uh, the district average closer to two percent. Uh, a growth of o- over that, over that time period. Uh, on page two of the presentation, we have a history of your tax rates over the last five years. Um, you have your operational mill levy, your S B nine, and your H B thirty-three are not up for renewal uh for this year. Um, but as mentioned, your geo bonds are um, the, as we kind of talked about your capacity in the upcoming slides. This is all to maintain the five dollar twenty-seven cent tax rate that the district has had in place for quite some time now. Uh, on page um three of the presentation, um, we have provided your outstanding debt. You'll see that you will pay off uh the bulk of your of your debt over the next uh seven to eight years. And as you kind of see, your capacity will increase um in in about uh in about eight years out, you'll see your your geo bond capacity increase there as you as you pay off your debt. And currently, the district is about fifty-two percent uh bonded to capacity. The other thing uh that I did want to just bring up to the board is this last November, as some of you may be aware, that there were two um, con- New Mexico constitutional amendments that were passed by voters that effectively increased the exemption that uh veterans receive. The first exemption is related to disabled veterans. Um, prior to um that constitutional amendment, only veterans that were a hundred percent disabled um got a qualifying exemption that was tied to their uh disability percentage. Um, that constitutional amendment was approved by voters and it basically expanded um, the uh exemption from a hundred percent disabled to any percent disabled and tied their property tax exemption to their disability percentage. And then the other amendment that was also approved by voters increased the standard better exemption for four thousand, ten thousand. Uh, the legislature um in the last test session memorialized both of these. Uh, on the constitutional amendment two, they also tied that uh amendment to um, C P I uh so that that uh that standard exemption could go up over time uh. Uh, and it could increase with inflation. Um, it's really difficult to to determine the exact impact of these exemptions at this time. Uh, mostly the the disabled veteran, uh, because there's just not really great information on uh what disabled veterans own property, the values of those properties. Uh, we have done, uh, we've attempted to try to estimate what that impact uh would be based upon um, uh, disabled veteran um information within uh within the county. But I must stress that it is, that it is a guess, um, and we'll we'll get a lot more information next year. Uh, once this disabled veteran starts flying for the exception, we'll have more information about May of next year. Uh, but on page six of the presentation, as I mentioned, we did try to estimate what this uh impact is. Uh, you, we estimated it's about forty-five million dollars, it's about two percent impact to uh to your tax base. And as we talk about uh various uh bond capacity amounts that that the district could go out for, we do take this into consideration in in those numbers. Uh, on page six, uh, just for prior and advanced planning purposes, we've uh, we have a schedule of your uh bond elections and your capital mill levy elections. Uh, the district did go back to voters uh in November of twenty twenty-three and renewed both the two mil and H B thirty-three. Those are not up for renewal until twenty-nine, and then your geo bonds would be uh up for renewal this uh this uh this November and twenty twenty-five. So uh on page seven, uh, we've provided three different election scenarios based upon three different growth assumptions. Uh, we've assumed uh two percent, uh, which is uh, which is where the district has averaged on over the last ten years. Uh, three percent, which is more closely um uh uh closely to what you've done over the last five years. And then we've also looked at a a sort of a high growth scenario over the next few years of five percent. And what would the impact on the bond elections be? And we've provided those um in in the last follow-on each. So, under a two percent growth scenario, um, the district could go out to voters, the amount of twenty million. Um, under the three percent, twenty-five million, and then under a five percent growth scenario, it would be thirty million for this upcoming election. We've also projected out elections, uh, which we've provided below. Um, assuming the two percent growth scenario, lower growth scenario uh over the next three election cycles, it'd be about eighty-five million in bonds um to go to voters. Under a three percent uh growth scenario, it would be a hundred million, and then it would be a five percent growth over the next few years. It would go up to about a hundred fifteen uh billion. Again, this is designed to keep your tax rate the same, um, five dollars and twenty-seven cents uh roughly. Uh, and also does take into account those uh to the extent that, you know, uh, our best guess of what those impact on those exemptions would be. They've been factored into this analysis. Uh, and so from a timing standpoint, um, we would come back to you at your July meeting. Um, and you would actually have a consideration for a a a bond election. And it would include the amount, um, this was a presentation for discussion purposes. And I'm certainly happy to answer any questions about presentation growth assumptions.
I think it's like, can you go back to slide three? Sorry, that's, oh, let's go to four then. Yeah, this bonded to capacity at fifty-two percent, or should that be?
It really, it really did, you know, is based upon, you know, one of the size of the district uh, to your debt profile and whether or not uh the issuance of debt would, you know, increase your your tax rate. Um, so, you know, given your, you know, given your current debt profile, um, yeah, you know, as mentioned, you could add, you know, for this upcoming election. Uh, you know, twenty uh twenty million, but you'll see districts anywhere from eighty percent, close to a hundred percent bonded capacity. Um, their tax rates are, you know, double if not more than what yours is. And then so you have other districts that are thirty percent bonded capacity.
So, uh, in the, for discussion purposes, in the finance committee meeting, you know, Mr. Gamboa and I, um, we looked at uh they, met the P S F A in regard to the other two projects that we have on the table along with the pre-K Mesa Verde Elementary and Heights Middle School. Um, and what it would take to get those projects started, so um without raising the tax rate, twenty thousand doesn't work, twenty-five thousand doesn't work, thirty thousand doesn't work. So we're gonna work really hard to um work with the P S F A, what are our options to to continue with those projects and come with a recommendation? Um, and and probably have a couple offline meetings with the finance committee in between now and then to to figure out what the number really is. Um, there are many options, going with the high option of thirty million dollars without raising the tax rate could mean potential loss or less in, uh, you know, the next bond uh bonding cycle. Um, so we'll just have to to bring more uh options, I guess, to the table or to discuss prior to determining what that number is. Uh, Mr. Harrigan, what point do you need the number for the resolution, seventy-two hours prior to the, or do you need it?
Um, really, realistically, we would, we would need it whenever um the the resolution would get sent to the to the board. So, I mean, it could, you could even, you could, you could publish the agenda without the exact amount, but the, you know, uh, okay, once the information is provided to the board.
So we can work up seventy-two hours prior to uh the July eighth board meeting, not figuring out what that number is. Um, this is Williams, Miss Maxwell, any, you wanna add anything from the finance committee news today or anything, any questions, concerns?
You know, one of the, one of those discussion items we had was maybe we could go out for a higher amount. And then if our tax base didn't support that, not issue it. So if we wanted to ask voters for thirty billion and then our tax base didn't reach that five percent, we could, we cannot issue the bonds. There'd be questions, why didn't those use the bonds that the operator used, but those would be very explainable. We discussed that.
Also, we're in a a time of volatility and a change of many things. And it will take some creativity and some options to figure out how to implement that and maybe re-prioritize some things, I don't know, that'll be your call, but um we're just in a strange time right now at this moment.
How much did it, I, to build preschool?
Uh, he has the numbers for the two to the P one.
No, I, I just, I, in my mind, I thought it was third, so I forgot. So it was more than, and then the cost went higher in the interim, but the state picked up.
Yeah, I mean, obviously we went for a poll waiver and then that, so it's not costing the district. But um, one, something that I learned today, um, I think I may have been told this before, but it didn't. We built Farmington High ten years ago, eight, nine years ago, for how much a square foot?
About three hundred and twenty-five dollars a square.
And we're building the pre-K for?
About six hundred and seventy-five.
It's about double.
Better than a thousand, regardless.
There is a school district building a new school for over a thousand right now.
I've heard that.
So it's tough.
Yeah.
We have to make some hard decisions between now and July and what we're gonna do and. Okay?
Thank you.
Any other questions for Sir? Okay, alright, thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming up. We'll share that presentation with the board as well. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, item nine, A, approval of the I I D E A budget presented by the board.
Good evening. Mr. Corley, board members, Mr. Deal, um, grateful to have this moment to talk to you about our budget. Um, just to give you kind of some general overviews of what we're looking at. We have a budget of about two point eight million dollars that was granted to us this year. It's about a ten percent decrease from the year before.
What about staff or?
We don't know. I can tell you that our newest terms of student enrollment have increased.
Well, they've increased.
Oh, they've increased. Oh, so then I, sorry.
Rooms with I V's have increased, so just over nineteen hundred students with with disabilities in the district. Uh, so the the budget is is broken up by these objectives. The first is direct instruction, just over a million dollars. Uh, that's broken down just to give you an idea of what we're talking about here, special education teachers. Um, that's two teachers that we fund with this grant. Um, our project search, search teacher and our teacher at the learn, the alternative learning bar. And then about fifteen of our educational assistants are filmed in through this grant. Um, and those are just sort of scattered throughout. Saviors for our site specialists, those are the individuals at each of the schools that sort of oversee the the I V process and support the special education teachers in the building. A work-study program for our students at the two high schools that go into uh into businesses and work. Uh, and then extended school year, which is, which is going on right now. And then next year, um, we've anticipated this budget will be needed for. I think that includes about five teachers, a few educational assistants, uh, a behavior interventionist. And then an administrator, so uh, if you can take us to the next slide. Uh, instructional support, this is primarily our our educational diagnosticians, we have nine. Um, one school psychologist, uh, sign language interpreters that we pay, that we pay for. Um, special education clerks, we have six clerks that are positioned throughout the district, four admin schools and two of our two large high schools. And their primary purpose is is helping to schedule I P meetings for those schools. Um, transition specialists, we have one at each of our large high schools. Uh, take us to the next slide if you would, and then finally, uh, other support services, around ten thousand dollars, printing services, about ten thousand dollars in the indirect costs. So, not a whole lot tied up into this portion of our budget. Um, what questions might you have?
What's the transition specialist?
What's that?
Transition specialists.
Transition specialists work with our students on the mobility pathway. Which is our most significant cognitive disabilities. And then work with those students to be prepared for their future after high school. They they work with our middle school students as well, but primarily they work with our students that are at the high school level. And and connect them with the division of vocational rehabilitation and Division of vocational rehabilitation and some other union services.
Right.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
What? Okay, uh, Mr. President, I recommend the board approve the I D E A budget as presented. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Andres Stradlin.
Second. Please, second. Roll call vote, Ms. McWilliams.
Hi.
Ms. Maxwell.
Hi.
Mr. Corley, I, Ms. Stradlin.
Hi.
Ms. Mays.
Hi.
The Board of Education will adjourn into executive session pursuant to section ten dash one five dash one H two and section ten dash fifteen dot one. H seven of the Open Meetings Act to discuss limited personnel matters in the form of a personnel. Report from the superintendent on union activities and to discuss with. The school district's attorney, the recognition of prospective bargaining unit and its representation as pending. Or threaten litigation and to apply best practices under the attorney-client privilege in anticipation of and prevent further litigation. No action will be taken and only the items listed will be discussed. Can I get a motion to go into?
So moved, Andres Stradlin.
I get a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Ms. McWilliams.
Hi.
Ms. Maxwell.
Hi.
Mr. Corley, I, Ms. Stradlin.
Hi.
Mr. Mays.